Welcome, everyone. If we could just introduce ourselves, that would be great.
Leslie Harvey, Clerk to the Board.
Commissioner Alicia Reese, Vice President of the Board.
Good afternoon. I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse.
Fallido County Administrator.
Charlie Anis of the Prosecutor's Office.
Thank you so much. Stephanie Summeral-Dumas, President of the Board. We will move forward with our first item on the agenda, which is a silent prayer. And then if you could please stand right after that for the Pledge of Allegiance. So just for a few minutes of silent prayer. Thank you. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance, unified wire of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. A nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the previous session.
Second, Commissioner Summeral-Dumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item of business, public comments. I have two of them. Nick Talbert. Come forward, please. You have two minutes. Welcome.
Well, it's been a while since I've been down here. But all of a sudden, I gotta change, I gotta change your plan. I was forced to do this. Um, I don't know if a lot of you know, I come out of the number one chef school in the country called the Conner Institute upstate New York. And years ago, about close to almost 20 years ago, I put together a show called Dining Entertainment. And what I did is I went around and I introduced people to restaurants. Hilton Hotel, Jeff Ruby, and all of them loved the show. And I did it on radio. And I actually did it on black radio. And it was a crossover hit. Now, because of the epidemic, I didn't know it was as bad. These restaurants ain't came out of the state yet. They can't get bodies in there. They can't. They can't get bodies. And I come up with a plan, me and my Vice President. And we wanted to try to see if we can get y'all's support because the city loves it. Because what's going to happen is we're going to put money back into the system. Everybody comes down to get money, but it don't produce money to put back into the system. I'm going to be going around to the restaurants, just like I did 20 years ago, to these restaurants because they can't afford to advertise. They can't. It costs too much. Everything is on the internet. One of the people that wanted me to bring it back was Jason Dunn. He said, "We love for you to bring the show back because of what they doing down there." So I'm here to see, I'm going to be bringing you the proposal. I'm going to send it to each one of you all. The money that you're going to spend ain't that much. I ain't looking to get rich off of this. I'm looking to help my colleagues that's struggling out here. They're really, they really are struggling. When you can't get bodies. As a matter of fact, we're going to put together a program where they're going to be able to have the schools are going to send these students, cooking school, down to these restaurants. It's an apprenticeship program. We're putting it all together. Cincinnati State loves it. And I'm hoping I get all y'all's support. And I'm going to send everybody the proposal to you to see it.
Thank you so much. And certainly send your proposal to, as you said, to all of us. We are, as a board, very interested in small businesses, specifically restaurants. We did three rounds of small businesses with our federal money and spent almost $13 million on that. But I understand the problems that are still existing in the community. We did not reach everybody. So certainly be happy to look at your proposal.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. We have one additional comment. Derek Mays, please come forward.
Hello. Fine, thank you. Okay, good afternoon. Two minutes. Two minutes. Thank you. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yes, I'm here representing the National Association of Appraisal Bias Task Force. And some of you may not know that there are only approximately 10 African-American appraisers in Cincinnati. So we're here to provide a resource for individuals who have a problem with appraisal values. Of course, it's all over the national news, but we have a local problem here. And our organization is here to provide resources to Hamilton County, the City of Cincinnati, in relationship to values and appraisal bias here in Cincinnati. My time in Cincinnati or Hamilton County has been about 35 years in the real estate appraisal business. So again, there's only a few of us left. We're, all of us are probably over 55. And we're going out of business soon, but we want to be able to provide a resource to the community. And I'll send the website and everything to you guys so you can share that with the community if they have some problems with values. We just recently did a course with Housing Opportunities Made Equal and free course for real estate people and professionals. Before I run out of time, the second thing I wanted to mention was the urban farmers here in Hamilton County have been trying to reach your waste, food waste department, and we haven't been able to get any recourse. There's some funding that was available through the USDA that we wanted to work with them on to get. But we haven't been able to get any real communication with them. There's another grant coming up again. And we're hoping that one of you all could actually reach out to your waste department. And, and I'll send you my information, or you have my information, so that they can contact us because there's some federal funding that's available and the county is missing it because, for whatever reason.
Thank you so much. Thank you for that resource as it relates to solid waste. And we'll make sure that they get your number to contact you so we don't miss any opportunities. Oh, that was your time. I thought it was over. Are you done?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and I'm very interested in appraisal bias program that you say that you have. And so if you can send us that information, I had not heard about that. Be happy to, for all of us to take a look at it.
Yeah, we've been working with Congressman Maxine Waters's office. So HUD, we've, when we did the course, the Appraisal Foundation came to Cincinnati. Commissioner Reese might remember that Ohio was on the forefront of this in 96 when the Federal Reserve had the Federal Reserve Mortgage Credit Project, and we had a subcommittee on appraisals. So we addressed this issue back in 96 in Ohio. But since it's national now, we need to come back and talk about it.
Thank you. I don't think you were even born in 96.
I will, you know. My older sister. Told you my parents got me working young, young. But I do want to, thanks for coming and thanks for bringing that up. And I am going to ask our Administrator, because a couple of things. The realitists, which are African-American real estate brokers, they had, you know, kind of been doing their own thing, and they were not a part of the county as we're doing this affordable housing. We brought them to the table for the first time, and now they're a part of the group for affordable housing. Secondly, I wanted to say that an African-American appraiser, and he's going to kill me if I can't remember his name, because I can't remember right now. He came to me and Jill Schiller, our treasurer, was looking to put someone on the board, I think it's Appeals.
That's David Beard?
Yes.
So only 10 of us, we all know each other.
So Mr. Beard is the, I believe, first African-American appraiser to be on there. She has him on there. So we're making some progress, but with a lot more to be made. And I'm really going to ask the Administrator, because we, in our budget, we have a component. We're trying to increase African-American land ownership, and they've got some consultants. And I think you should be a part of that. And as we talk about affordable housing, appraising is a big issue because, you know, we've seen the situations, appraiser go in and the family is one way. They did experiment, and then a non-African-American family had the same house and act like it was theirs, and the praise went up. So we want to look at that and see, make sure that in Hamilton County, that's not happening. So you're at the right time. And lastly, the USDA, when we were at the White House, we got so much information, but the USDA does have a lot of money. I've been hearing like the USDA has like all this money that's coming out, and we have lobbyists up there. And we want a piece of the pie. So definitely the food waste program, but also the agriculture program that we do with OSU Extension. I've asked about the Central State Extension. And there's a gentleman that wants to do agriculture of the beans for coffee, African-American. So it's just so many things we can work together. But I hope that Jeff, you get a chance to reach out directly with him on some initiatives that our board is, he can be very helpful. Yeah, great. Thanks.
Thank you.
You brought some, you didn't bring complaints, you brought some information that we can use. So thank you.
You're welcome. All right.
And I'm going to pass your information on to Commissioner Treehouse because she leads that solid.
Yeah, well, I'm the representative from the Commission on the Solid Waste District, so I'll make sure they get your information.
Okay, all right. Thank you all. Have a great day.
Thank you. Did you have? All right, well, we will move forward. Nothing on Zoom or anything, I'm assuming. Thank you very much. We'll move forward. Comments and motions from the Commissioners. I'll get started. Just a few things I wanted to tell the public about. I attended Princeton City Schools, had a, the state of the schools in Princeton. I believe I, days are going together, but I believe it was on Tuesday I went. And there was a great summary by the principal as it relates to where Princeton schools are. They're doing much better. They know they have much more work to do. It was just a great meeting to meet with all those strategic partners in that district. And to, I already knew some of them, but developed relationships with others. And also, the Emergency Management Agency had a, their annual meeting, Hamilton County Partners in Preparedness. And I gave some remarks at the beginning to talk about how much we thank them, the first responders, for all that they've done. And so it was just a great training effort from, from about eight till, to noon. And I learned a lot myself. We all three just got back from Talbot House Annual Luncheon. They gave out some awards. I'm sure my colleagues will speak somewhat more to that luncheon. And that's why we started it at two, to support Talbot House and all that they do. So that's all I have for now. I'll pass it over to Vice President Reese.
Thank you. Yes, as mentioned, you spoke at the Hamilton County Partners in Preparedness, six and, sixth annual meeting. And just to add to that, wanted to just give a big shout out to Director Nick Crossley and his team. And what it showed is that our region is working together and is preparing every day in a variety of ways to keep us safe. Whether it's from the hurricane type of thing, climate change, COVID, health. And what we heard yesterday is we had someone there speaking from FEMA. We had someone from the Ohio Agency that deals with preparedness. And they all said that Hamilton County is a leader, not just in the state, but in the country. And that is attributed to the work that Nick is leading and making sure that we're at the table, we're getting the funds, we're on top of stuff. It's always great when you have someone whose passion, they're able to work in their passion. And we know that this is his passion. We were happy to hear, they said, "Every time before something happens, Nick is on the phone. Hut, I need answers." So really want to, I appreciate that. And the Police Chief of Sharonville was also there. And I got a chance to talk to him briefly about how the response was to the Princeton High School incident. Even though it was a hoax or fake, they took it as real and they moved so quickly. And told him that maybe he can come forward, maybe one of our meetings to talk about. They have been preparing and how they're continuing to prepare for, you know, unfortunate incidents like this. So I just wanted to give a shout out to his leadership because, of course, it was all jurisdictional. But he was the leader to make the calls and make sure that it wasn't completely chaotic. So wanted to mention that. Also, also was joining my colleagues today at the Bethany House Ribbon Cutting today. That was incredible. It consolidates and updates and expands these services. Again, back to our, our policy of trying to put a dent into this affordable housing. And just to hear the testimony, it was just so great to hear the young lady's testimony talking about how she never thought it would happen to her and that things hit her in life. And she might have been down for a moment, but Bethany House let her know that you can't give up on your dreams. And now she's doing great, and she's a spokesperson. So it can hit anybody. And so Bethany House, just want to say congratulations. Susan, they talked about how Susan is relentless, and she is. As soon as I got elected, she was like, "Listen, you need to know about this Bethany House." So I want to welcome Bethany House to, to my neighborhood. And I think it's going to be a great, it's a, it's a wonderful, well-designed, well-thought-out facility. And Matter President Commissioner Treehouse had also had minority businesses helping to build it, majority and minority partnerships. So that was also good. So we were there, as Matter President said, we were there to dig up the dirt, and then next thing we know, we got a ribbon cutting. So we were very happy to see that today. Also, joined our Commission at the Talbot House Annual Awards. And I know Commissioner Treehouse will talk more about that. But I want to give a shout out to the Hamilton County Addiction Response Coalition for getting the Community Service Award and for all the hard work that you do. Again, hearing that we're a leader, Hamilton County. We got a, we got a theme here. We're a leader again in Ohio and in the nation. So I know Commissioner Treehouse will talk more about that in her remarks. Also, this weekend, I want to give a shout out to Kroger, which is down the street from us, the International Headquarters. They hosted their annual Wellness Festival, and the festival now has moved to the banks. So the weather held out for us, but I want to thank all that were involved with Kroger Wellness. And I want to especially give a thanks to Jennifer Moore, who was heavily involved. And I was very excited and honored to attend, not only attend, but to accept a check, be a part of the check presentation that Kellogg's did as part of a grant that Dr. Weber from Withrow High School submitted for. Withrow High School got $25,000. And it was presented at the Kroger Wellness Event with a school board member and Olympic gold medalist, Mary Weinberg. Of course, I talked about Dr. Weber was there from Withrow, a teacher at Withrow. And also the Vice President of our Alumni Association, Carol Mitchell Lawrence. So I was happy to receive that and thankful for my alma mater, Withrow High School. Also met with, I met with Renee Mahafe Harris with closing the health gap and hearing some of the things that they're going to be doing. And I did speak with Jeff because we want to make sure the health gap is a part of the 513 relief bus in some kind of way because we are taking health services and helping to close that gap on an ongoing basis. And so I spoke with Jeff, so I'm sure they'll be meeting as I hear the bus is, has made it to the United States and is getting some parts. I think the parts are in, hopefully, and the pain is working. And hopefully, the wheels will be put on, and it'll be rolling on down here to Ohio, Hamilton County soon. But as we're putting those plans together, one of the things I always thought was that the health gap would be somehow involved with us as some type of partnership in some kind of way. So I wanted to highlight that. Also Blink is coming. We're excited about Blink. A lot of great new additions. And one, they're going to have a, one of the showcases will take place in honor of the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. There'll be a display that Smile Cincinnati put together in conjunction with Blink and the Chamber of Commerce called the Golden Garden. I'm excited about that. And we will unveil that on October the 14th. They're working on it. So I'll get the date and the time. So all of us are there, but it's the same day as the drones. So you'll be able to see the drones. You'll be see the Golden Garden, and it'll be down at, at the campus of the Andrew Brady Music Center. I think that was it. Oh, also, wanted to remind people, we still need poll workers. We still need poll workers. And we have a program at Hamilton County where you can be a poll worker and not lose on your pay. So encouraging our county employees, if you're available, to step up if you can and volunteer to help be a poll worker. Well, it's not volunteer. Use your expertise and be a poll worker for Hamilton County. Also, I attended the UC Ribbon Cutting for Digital Futures. It's on the Martin Luther King Highway exit, and that is dear, near and dear to me because it's a project that I worked hard on when I was at the State House. And we were able to, started when I was on council, got to the State House, we were able to get it done. And it was the only new highway, still maybe the only new highway exit in the state of Ohio. And it was the only new highway exit in any urban city. But it has created a whole innovation district with jobs and innovation, quicker to get to the hospitals. And so one of the renditions of the innovation is the University of Cincinnati Digital Futures Building that has a lot of technology and research. And so I was there for that ribbon cutting, and that could not have been possible without the highway exit and the partnership with Avondale Community. Also, lastly, I just would ask prayers, continuous prayers, for those who got hit in Florida and other areas. My family is down there. These is the nephews. It was a hard week for us, I tell you, between Princeton and now Florida. But they are, they got a lot of flooding, but at least they are alive. But to all the people down in Florida, as I told my brother and my sister-in-law, I said, "When Mickey and Minnie and Donald Duck get out of there, it's time to go." So, but they had shut down all of the airports and everything. So just prayers for everybody for the cleanup and, and for health. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Treehouse.
Thank you. Busy week for everybody, right? So, and I did, I did a lot of, we, we were together a lot, actually, this week. I did run out to Lachlan for the opening of the new Habitat House out there. It was a really nice celebration. And we will be in partnership with them with some of the housing dollars. So I was glad to represent the Commission out there. The Conservation District had their annual meeting, so I attended that. And also went to the EMA Annual Meeting with both of you. And a big shout out to Nick Crossley for continuously putting that front and center so that we are propelled, prepared as a community, and we have all these local partners working with us. I also went to a town hall, a disability town hall that was sponsored by LAD. We talked there about housing as well. And so I expect that we will be in that space as well when we talk about some of our housing dollars because there's a great need for people with disabilities. So the HCARC got the award today, as both of you have mentioned, at the Talbot House Luncheon. And, you know, HCARC is this great collective group of many, many experts that have been working for over six years to try to save lives and get people into long-term recovery that suffer with addiction. And I was honored, really, and humbled to accept the award on behalf of the members of HCARC. Greg Hartman joined. He was the founder of the Heroin Coalition back in the day. And so he was up on stage as well because it was his idea. And without him, I don't know that we would have had HCARC. But we've really done a lot in this community collectively. And Megan Gosney has really led the way, especially bringing dollars into the county so that we can continue to do this work. So it was really an honor to be there and with both of you as well. The last thing I've got is a big fat HU Day because we've got a game tonight, and it's a whiteout. And I can't wait to wa, I'm going to be watching the game. I can't wait to watch this game. I think it's going to be so interesting because I've seen some of the previews. So HU Day for the Bengals. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have our Administrator, Jeff Aludo.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of quick comments and then a one by leave item today. First, just to tag on to all three Commissioners in the comments about the Talbot House Luncheon, in particular, the work of the Addiction Response Coalition. I know the Board is largely aware of this, and a lot of it was discussed in, in the meeting today. But I also wanted to lump on congratulations to Megan Gosney with the Addiction Response Coalition and Cheryl Floyd, who works in our Budget Office, who does a lot of our grants administration. They, those two have collaborated to bring in just a, just a boatload of grant money into this county over the past couple of weeks. In total, about $4.577 million of grant money over the past couple of weeks. So we had the Recovery Ohio Grant, which was largely done through the Prosecutor's Office, which is great. And the other good thing about this is you can see all of the departments and even independent elected agencies of the county working together on this problem. So we had the Prosecutor's Office pulling in the Recovery Ohio Grant of 238,000. We had the two Drug Court Grants, SAMSA and the BJA Grant totaling $2.7 million. That obviously done in partnership with Judge Sanders and the Drug Court. So again, congratulations to her, Megan, and Cheryl, Isaiah Lumpkin's over in that office for all their work on this. You had the, the BJA Prevention Grant for school outreach. I think that one was $739,000. And you had another BJA Grant to help expand the Justice Center programming related to medication for opioid use disorders, which was $900,000. So the Sheriff as well, playing a role here. So just congratulations to everyone involved. And we're getting to the point where it's almost, there's too many people to, to name everyone like you found today in accepting the award. But I just wanted to congratulate everyone, in particular, those on this floor, Megan and Cheryl, who really worked hard to get some of those grants in. So that was my first item. Second item is, again, I think the Commissioners referenced the unfortunate events of last week related to Princeton High School. And while I think we're all are very relieved that it was, in fact, a situation that did not lead to anyone getting, getting hurt or worse, just wanted to throw out a big thank you to our 911 operators who responded very, very quickly, efficiently, and effectively to get public safety there. In addition to all public safety that did respond, notably our Sheriff's Office, who I know had deputies from all over the county respond to that incident. One quick note before I get to the by leave item, just so the Board is aware, and I will follow up with Mr. Mays. I think he was the gentleman that was in here just a bit ago, but I did get some communications. Just so the Board is aware, I think there, there has been dialogue between I think there, there has been dialogue between uh, the Solid Waste District and Mr. Mays on some of these issues. Um, so obviously not to his satisfaction or else it wouldn't have been your uh, stating it. But I did, didn't want it to be left that they had been unresponsive. So just, just so that the board is aware and I'll follow up directly with Mr. Mays to see what we can do to uh, help continue to facilitate the funding request that he's looking for, et cetera. Um, so those are the comments. I did, you also have a by leave item in front of you uh, this afternoon. Is the, just generally to tee this up, as the board is aware, we are in a continual uh, fight to try to attract and in many cases retain uh, talented employees uh, in Hamilton County. The board has done a lot of big things uh, to try to make this county an employer of choice in the community and make sure that, as I say, when I do all our onboarding sessions and we talk about how, you know, if you grow up in Cincinnati, you grow up and you say, I want to work for Procter and Gamble when I grow up. I want to work for Fifth Third Bank, I want to work for Kroger. Now maybe you're saying, I want to work for FC Cincinnati or the Bengals or the Reds or whatever it is. Um, we want to make sure that when people are growing up in this community, that they're saying, I want to work for Hamilton County. Because Hamilton County is a great place to work. They do fantastic things. They, I can work there and help the community. Um, I, I know they also treat their people well. So the board has made huge strides um, in that over the past several years. Um, whether it's anything from looking at compensation structures to reinstituting tuition reimbursement like we did in the budget last year, uh, to doing paid parental leave, all of those things. Uh, so all those big things. So it's a little ironic that under the Ohio Revised Code, if we want to do some little things uh, like employee recognition events or anything where employees are going to benefit, be it through like an employee recognition luncheon or something like that, that the board has to authorize those expenditures directly. So we have a resolution in front of you today, um, that authorizes the expenditure of an amount up to 15,000 dollars to support employee recognition events under the Board of County Commissioners and to indicate that any county funding directly benefiting employees that comes from this would be applied in a uniform manner to all similarly situated county employees. So this will operate through our uh, Human Resources Office as they continue to uh, look for ways to uh, fund uh, talent retention uh, activities. Um, a lot of this recommended as well through our Employee Advisory Committee, who has indicated to us that the more recognition that we can do, the more bringing together of employees that we can do, um, making the county feel more like a, a family of employees uh, helps with that morale and retention. So I put that forward to, to the board with a recommendation for your consideration and passage today. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much. Uh, so by leave one, we had another uh, by leave that's been taken off the agenda.
By leave one was not taken off.
Okay, because I heard him say yet one by leave, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, so there, yeah, this, this is by the number two.
Okay.
The first one is actually. Just suggest by the two person.
Sure, uh, uh, absolutely. We'll deal with uh, what you just discussed. So is there any comments as it relates to uh, by leave two, which is approving funds for talent retention activities? Um, Vice President Reese.
Yeah, I just want to say that um, we're living in a time now where the, it used to be a time where the uh, people were chasing, you know, the jobs and we were kind of sitting back. Uh, we're in a new day now where the jobs are chasing the employees and employees are looking for different things. Uh, we have heard already in our budget process, almost every, you know, department that's come before us and said, oh, we've got to do budget adjustment. We've got to, we've got to keep employees. And of course, pay is one thing, but they're looking for some other things that they want. They want to feel appreciated. Uh, and you know, we got to face it, especially during COVID. The employees were triple time, putting in the stress, the strain. Um, and we really, we thanked them, just saying thank you. But we really didn't take a moment to let them regroup, retool and in a big way. Tell them, uh, we appreciate them. So I see this as part of our recruitment. Uh, I see this part of outreach, but also see it as a part of uh, keeping the employees that we have that are good, because other people look at those employees, say, oh, they're, they're having a good time and they're loving their jobs, then wow, maybe I do need to go over there and see what Hamilton County has to offer. So I do support this. Uh, it's, you know, kind of weird that we had to do a resolution. But uh, I think that, you know, this is important. We do proclamations and those are great. But you know, people want to take a break and be celebrated and be honored and feel great about it. And uh, you know, then we present, this is just a cool place to work. So I, I support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
Yeah, I too support this. I think it's a great idea. Um, I also want to note that it was uh, a recommendation from the Hamilton County Employee Advisory Committee, a group of employees that make recommendations to us to do exactly what you're talking about, which is um, retain employees, uh, attract employees. And so I think we need to honor their work and respond to their recommendation. And so I will look forward to the lunch. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I also wanted to indicate that this was just not our idea. And I wanted to read the first part of the resolution. Whereas Hamilton County, like all employers, is an extremely competitive environment and faces challenges attracting and retaining top workforce talent. And whereas the Board of County Commissioners has taken several actions to incentivize and attract talent, including paid parental leave, tuition reimbursement as part of a robust benefits package. And whereas in April 2021, the Hamilton County Employee Advisory Committee was established to make recommendations to the county administrator on ways to improve the overall employee experience with a goal of making Hamilton County a top employer of choice within the region. I won't read the rest, but as was said, indicate, indicated earlier, 15,000 dollars to support employee recognition events. Um, I also wholeheartedly uh, support this. We talk all the time about big, major projects and issues that we have to vote on. This is a big, major project. Uh, to be able to do the things that we do, we have to retain and hire good people. And we're going to try to do everything we can to make that happen. So I'd like to make a motion approving funds for talent retention activities under the Board of County Commissioners.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners. And now by leave number one. Um, so in my apologies, I'd spoken to the Mayor of Loveland on this particular item and, and my, my understanding was it would not even be on the agenda um, because of the fact that the engineer had found uh, some errors uh, in how the, the annexation was put together. So um, at this point in time, I believe the board would just simply not act on this item until these uh, the errors in the, in the plat and in the annexation petition are, are corrected. It will then come back uh, with another engineer's report. Um, and should that report find no, no faults or errors, then the board would, would act at that point in time. So I don't think the board needs to take any action on this at all at this point.
Thank you so much. So I'd like to make a motion from the chair, not to act on by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you. And I just wanted to make a comment about what Jeff has said about the 4.5 million dollars worth of grants that we have just received. And what that does is allows us to leverage our general fund budget so we don't have to go in there and use that. And also in addition, what it does is so we still do not have to touch our reserves. So getting all these grants, of course, allows us to leverage our money without even going into the bank of the Hamilton County uh, funding. So this is just absolutely great. All right, we will move forward. Regular agenda MSD.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Um, we are here today um, with one item. We have a two, uh, 2022 Operating Budget First Amendment for your consideration. Uh, this current request is for an interdepartmental transfer within MSD's approved 2022 Operating Budget. The transfer totals 1,360 dollars, 360, sorry, I'm reading that wrong. Um, 1,36882 dollars. Um, the action is a net zero transfer that uses available and appropriated 2022 non-personnel and personnel funds. And we did discuss these um, in both our first and second quarter operating budget reports, but I will quickly summarize the actions that um, we're taking here and be happy to get into more detail on any um, that you require. So um, we have a need in our IT Division, that's MSD's Information Technology Personnel Budget. It requires an additional 600,000 dollars. That's just to cover existing staff. Um, the Wastewater Administration Division, uh, we have a need in our personnel budget. We require an additional 560,000 approximately in order to fund increased pension liabilities for staff that retired. Um, and then in the Office of Director, uh, we have a personnel budget need of 200,000 and that is due to uh, personnel transfers uh, that were required from one division to another within MSD. Um, so again, uh, while it's a net zero transfer within the operating budget, um, this does not impact any capital dollars. Uh, however, as we've noted and discussed previously, um, we do have the available funds due to us budgeting for um, engineering labor to be a capital expense. Um, that's something you've approved in the capital budget. And as we've um, done that in the, the last several years, kind of come to um, realize we have more funds potentially than we needed in our wastewater engineering personnel budget. Um, so a large majority of those funds for this transfer are coming from the Wastewater Engineering Division Operating Budget. Again, all of it ultimately a net zero uh, budget adjustment within our operating budget. Um, and with that, uh, the request today is to amend, adjust and approve the 2022 Operating Budget.
Thank you. Um, I have no questions. I'll ask Vice President Reese.
Uh, I, I'm sorry. I do have a question. Um, does this include, last time you were here, um, you mentioned about a new position. You had contracted out, but now you were going to do it in-house. There was a new position moving up to the uh, under the director's area.
We don't have any new positions funded through this. Um, we had a, so that, within the Office of Director, my office, um, we had a budget position that wasn't previously in this office and that's Joseph Schuster here filled that. So when we budgeted for that, it was in our Wastewater Administration Division. Um, and we transferred it to be under, directly under the director. So that's one of the things, but I don't, I don't think that's what you asked about previously. So I'm, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. Something you said, we contract out and you were going to create a position.
Um, well, if perhaps that is in, you know, so within our wastewater engineering division, a fair amount of that um, prof. Um, and so, you know, there is uh, that, a lot of that is part of the capital labor. Um, and over time, you know, there are needs that we could bring certain positions if they're, they're full-time and required. We would bring more of those in-house. Um, but there's no specific dollars related to this transfer, um, related to any positions that were contracted.
Right, I know that. Uh, but I know that we're in a peculiar situation. And what I don't want is uh, extra top-heavy folks in the, I guess if you would call it the C-suite level. Um, so that's why I was asking, these transfers, will this improve? You're making these transfers, is that to improve to the customer? Or what's the purpose of it?
Um, there, most of this is um, you know, really to cover the way we're already structured. Um, and it, it other, with the exception of the transfers for our um, Director's Office. And I think that does help us improve our service because managing our budget properly um, is an important, you know, part of the service we provide. Um, but primarily uh, the IT Division is one that we hadn't fully accounted for uh, when we did the projections um, due to just changes in how we track that. And but the IT Division is one area where um, you know, we, we see that we can provide tremendous improvements to the services um, with our IT staff. Um, so we want to be fully funded in that area. We tend to not have vacancies um, in those positions, which is a good thing. But when we budget with vacancy, you know, allowances, it makes it a lot um, tighter when you don't have departures. So, well, that's a good thing, like you were talking about. Um, you know, it makes the budget tighter. But yes, that's one area where I can say um, there's a very clear correlation in the services we're able to provide by some of those technology improvements um, we can make to our day-to-day operations.
Okay. You know, whenever we hear the words, we had more money than we need, you know, the light bulb goes off. So hold on, what's going on here? Um, and I know this is a zero impact. I just want to make sure from a structure standpoint, because I know that we are uh, dealing with some things which I can't talk about, but we just want to make sure we're not restructuring that will uh, possibly get in the way of anything that we may be doing um, in the future. So that's why I'm, I'm very interested in the organizational chart. And then secondly, my thing is transferring if it's going to be more customer service. Uh, I was out at the ribbon cutting and got stopped again by COFA. I mean, is somebody gonna, is somebody to handle that? Because I mean, that's the kind of stuff I want to make sure that, not just with them, but more responsive to, because they're not the only people that, that have issues. There's a lot of other people that call us that have issues. And I want to make sure if you got all this staff and I'm down to two staff, uh, you all should be doing a whole lot more than us and we only got two per, two per office. So I want to just be clear on any type of restructuring. I want it to be uh, customer-focused, uh, something that will take the uh, responsibility off of our offices that only have two people each and have someone who can deal directly with these issues that may come in. Uh, because we're, we're getting, I know I'm getting stopped. I'm sure others are getting stopped everywhere we go. So uh, that means that your office or your area is not going there, it's coming over here. And uh, when we hear restructure, I'm looking for, we got something now that will deal with that. It's more customer-friendly. We're going to get back to people quicker. We just frees up money to help more people. That kind of thing is what I'm kind of looking for. But uh, of course, I, you know, I don't have anything against this today, but I do want to put that on your, on your watch is what I'm looking for as it relates to a restructure.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
I have no questions related to this item.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to mo, make a motion to adopt item one.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yep.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much.
Thank you.
We'll move forward with our consent agenda items, items two through 24. I would just highlight a few of them and of course, my colleagues can bring out whatever concerns or questions they have. Um, item three specifically, um, the Community Revitalization Grant is uh, the first time that the board has done that. We want, when I say done that, we want to make sure that every entity, villages, townships are allocated monies to uh, revitalize their community. And this is a village of Lachlan for 200,000 dollars. Um, item five, um, 261,000 dollars for, in behalf of county facilities. Uh, we're trying, this is an old uh, uh, building and we're looking at lobby uh, things that need to be done in the lobby uh, for renovation for people who come in, our public who come in, they can have a nice place to come into. Um, item number seven, almost a million dollars for um, our elevator modernization. We have often had problems with our elevators in this building and that's almost a million dollars. Um, item number eight, uh, County Facilities Department, uh, a purchase order uh, from facilities for almost 140,000 dollars. Item nine is um, on behalf of county facilities, a lease office space for OSU Extension Office, 431,000 dollars. Um, also parking for the Pay Corps Instant Replay Upgrade, 878,000 dollars on behalf of Stadia and parking. JFS, of course, has many um, items that they're asking for us to approve as we work toward um, our young children and placement for them. Uh, parenting, item 11, parenting time, 2.4 million dollars. Item 12, 1.3 million dollars for residential treatment services. Um, I wanted to say, Doing Businesses TC Harris School, a training as a, with Indiana. I want to say item 12, I want to be specific on this. Um, an original agreement with Indiana Developmental Training Center of Lafayette LLC, Doing Businesses TC Harris School for 1.3 million for residential treatment. Uh, item 13 is 200,000 for family preserv, preservation continuum services. Item 14 is for residential treatment services, again, 300,000. Item 15, Job and Family Services, additional uh, residential treatment services, 1.5 million. Item 16, 66,000 uh, for foster care services. Item 17, 300,000 uh, for again, residential services. Um, item 18, 200,000 dollars for additional residential services, of course, at another uh, location. It's Little Creek Behavioral, which is a provider. Item 19, Residential Treatment Services with Lakeland Behavioral Health System as a provider. Item 20, Residential Services, once again, agreement with Habilitation Center, Doing Business as Mill Creek of Arkansas Provider for the Board and Job and Family Services, 200,000. Item 21, again, Residential Treatment Services with Piney Ridge Treatment Center. They've been around for quite a while, $75,000. Item 22, Residential Treatment Services, again, with Rolling Hills Hospital. And on item 23, we have no objection to two liquor permit applications. And item 24 requested authorization for travel from the coroner, one employee, and four engineer employees to Columbus. And so I just wanted to go through that, so the public would know where we're spending some of our money. I will open it now for any discussion. Vice President Reese.
Thank you. I want to call attention, you had mentioned it, item number three. Just wanted to hone in on that Village of Lachlan. And when I was a state rep, I represented Lachlan, was in my district. And I would hear a lot from the council that, you know, they feel sometimes forgotten. And I'm just glad with this Community Revitalization Grant program that we have, we're able to help not just the bigger cities, the townships, but we're helping the small villages. And Lachlan, we haven't talked a lot about Lachlan. So this is great, Lachlan, $200,000 and what they're going to be doing there in terms of their business district area will be great. So wanted to highlight that, because you know, you hear that all the time, you only do stuff with the big cities. No, we're doing stuff for villages and, and smaller areas as well, smaller cities as well, too. Also, I wanted to bring attention to item number nine. Well, let me go back to seven, just want to say, yay, this elevator is very important for, for, for the disabled. I was disabled, and so we need the elevator working. So it's very important, so thank you for that. I know it's a strange number, that people see that number, say, what is that number? So that, that is great. But item number nine is what I wanted to bring attention to, dealing with the OSU Extension Office. And I'd asked Jeff about this, you said in the Ohio Revised Code, we're paying the rent, I believe, rent-lease space for $431,802 for Ohio State University Extension Program, which I support. But I asked, did the ORC just say extension, or did it specifically say Ohio State? And even if it did say that, I want to have a reach out to Central State, because there are two universities, only two, in the whole state of Ohio, that has what you call land grant status, which allows for extension programs. And Ohio State has one, and also Central State. And in fact, my chief of staff, Quinton Monroe, that's how we actually met. I was president of Black Caucus, and we were fighting for funding for Central State because they had land grant status, but didn't have the money to go along with this status, which is very hard to get. It has to have historical status, and the United States federal government has to give that to you, and it's very, very difficult to get. And he was SGA president. And so now Central State has this extension program, it's extended into Cincinnati and other areas. Amber Twitty is one that's helping to lead that. And I wanted to ask if there, if it just says extension, is it a way for OSU Extension and Central State, who do work together, be able to be together with this office space? And then if it does specifically say Ohio State Extension in the Ohio Revised Code by state law, I still would like for Central State to be on the table to look at their extension program. We're putting money into agriculture with buying sites through the Port Authority and different things that we're doing. But I think we could have a better partnership also that will help us with recruitment and diversity with the county, if we could somehow have some kind of partnership with Central State Extension Program. They're already doing some work on the west side, I believe. But I think to kind of bring them into what we're doing, so we're not in silence. So I wanted to ask about that item. And then now item number 10, just want to highlight, we were just hollering Hoot Day, but I want to remind the folks that when you see the instant replay, we always look at that, go get the tape. We want to challenge the call, or either we want to see that touchdown again, we want to see Chase through the giddy. That replay upgrade that you'll be able to see is the county moving forward with that. But I will have to say that I want to see more about what's going on. And I've said this to the administrator, what's going on with the stadium? We are public figures, we have the public money, and we can't walk around and say, we don't know, they not taking our phone calls, we the landlords. And if this was someone's house and you were the landlord, you can't tell the landlord, you gonna make all these improvements, and the heck with you landlord, you can't see what I'm doing, I'm putting a whole new porch on, but you can't, I'm not going to tell you what it is. So we have to start, I think, when they say, well, we want to have a good relationship, a good relationship is respect on both sides. And we have a responsibility, when we go to the table, we're like the agents, we're the agents for the taxpayers, and we have to know this stuff, and we got to know what's put on our building. And we can't have two sets of rules, one set of rules for the people, they can't let a person try to put something up in the zoning people haven't passed yet, see what happens to them. So we have to have one set of rules. And when you got one set of rules, like on the football field, they got one set of rules. Here are the rules, here's how you have a touchdown, here's how you kick a field goal. You can't have one team kick a field goal and it's, you know, worth, you know, 15 points, and then we kick the field goal, it is not worth that. We want one set of rules. So I just wanted to throw any myths that, oh, they're not, the county commissioner, they ain't being cooperative. Today, we're passing $878,540.67. So when everybody's down there with their white, white out, and they're grinning, and you see that replay, know that this board has passed it. So I wanted to put that out there. And it's nothing against Paycor. I also want to ask the administrator to provide to us, what is our contract with Paycor? I think we're one of the largest, Hamilton County, I think, is the largest client, or one of the largest clients of Paycor. So we pay Paycor, so we can't be against Paycor. But we do have rules, we do have responsibilities, and when the people ask us a question, they're looking for us to be able to have an answer. So wanted to highlight that, that's on our agenda today. And if we could find out about Central State, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Drew House.
I also was going to highlight item number three, because it's a continuation of our Community Revitalization Grants. Lachlan, I, I think we used to say this about Silverton a couple of years ago, that they were on the move, they were getting a lot of grant dollars from us and, and doing great things, and they still are. Now Lachlan, I think, has joined that, that same category. So congratulations to Lachlan, and I'm delighted that this program is having this impact. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to piggyback on what you said about item 10 as it relates to the stadium and the upgrades and communication and all, and I totally agree with what you were saying. It makes, you made some great points. Okay. Okay, with no further discussion, I would like to make a motion to adopt items two through 24.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you so much. With no further business to come before the board, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Summer Adumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Drew House.
Yes.
Thank you.